This is the Thursday, August 26, 2010, meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Would you call the roll, please?
Joanna Cross. Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Carr.
Here.
Kenneth Burkhardt.
Here.
Jeff Ron. Joshua Fink.
Present.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Moving on the agenda, there are no minutes before us for approval. Special Order of Business, executive sessions, do we have any disclosures to announce this evening? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. We have before us four resolutions for approval. Has everyone had a chance to review those resolutions? Would anyone like to pull any of those off the consent agenda? Seeing no one indicating so, could I have a positive motion for approval of the consent Mr. Vig? Thank you. Mr. Burkhardt, you've indicated you seconded.
Yes.
Is there any opposition to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, consent agenda items are approved. We have no appearance requests this evening, which moves us on to our unfinished business, public hearings for case 2010-069, petitioner Mount Vernon Condominium Association. Mr. Barrett, I believe this is your case. Now, the public hearing on this has been closed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so anyone in the audience, this public hearing has been closed, it was heard, I believe at our July meeting, and it was... Mr. Barrett, could you provide us with the status of the case before... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Burkhardt?
I just wanted to mention for the record that I wasn't here at the July meeting, but I have listened to the tape of the meeting for this case over the web, so I think I am able to participate in the vote on the remaining variances.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Mr. Fink?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was not present at that meeting either, but I did listen to the hearing online, so I can vote as well.
You would also be able to participate?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. I believe everyone else in attendance was at that meeting. Mr. Barrett?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick update of what's happened since the last time this was before you. These are three related fence variances. The first variance was for a fence over the legal height limit at the front yard lot line. The second variance was for the fence to be within the clear vision area, since the fence would go to the corners of the lot. Almost by definition, it was going to be in the clear vision area. And then the third variance was for turning and maneuvering within the public right-of-way and not on private property, because the fence was going to be on the property line and gated at the driveway entries to the property. Vehicles were going to have to stop, take some sort of manual effort to activate an electronic gate and then open it and get in, and that is defined by the traffic department as turning and maneuvering within the right-of-way. So, since they would be doing it while waiting in the street, they would need a variance for that. Variance one, the fence height at the front yard lot line was approved at the first meeting, but variances two and three were not supported by the evidence at the time, and the board directed the applicant to submit another ASBelt, or another plot plan, I should say, showing what the fence would look like at the clear vision, with the clear vision area unobstructed, and with the fence setback at the driveways, both 10 and 20 feet. 20-foot setback is what the traffic and planning departments are asking for. A 10-foot setback is what the applicant is asking for, and that's just for the gate portion. The two drawings are on pages B and C, Bravo and Charlie, of the new information submitted. On B, that is the applicant's request, it shows the fence all the way around, all four tracts, basically at the lot line and in the clear vision area. The drawing on page C shows the fence with the clear vision area unobstructed, and it shows the fence setback 10 feet and 20 feet at the gates on the four driveways on the property. It's my understanding that the applicant will, would request the 10-foot setback, as opposed to the last time we met when he was asking for it at the property line. The traffic and planning departments still are recommending the 20-foot setback, because that is what code requires in order to get turning and maneuvering completely out of the right-of-way. Although I should add that a gate with a 10-foot setback, although the vehicle will still be protruding into the right-of-way, the vehicle, a standard-sized car, will be out of the constructed right-of-way, since the roads are not constructed to full width in this area. So, the department recommends denial for variances two and three, and there are some slightly modified conditions on page D in the new information. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Could you specifically identify what those changed conditions were?
The changed condition is number three. It's for variance number two, and I'm trying to remember now if condition two might also be a new one, because we have a little bit better ASBelt this time. The fire department requires that fire hydrants must be outside the fence and have three feet of clearance on all sides. So, it's number two, and I think number three, I don't recall. Nothing substantial, it's to go along with the approval of the variances.
Thank you, and specifically, there are four standards on page D, is that...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there... So, I believe that with that information, the matter's with, rests with us to make a ruling on the two variances, then?
Rests with the board unless you have questions of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions by the board? Mr. Vig?
I do have a question of the applicant, is there a representative here?
Hi, my name is Kathy Minks.
Could you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yeah. Kathy Minks, M-I-N-C-K-S, and I'm the property manager for Mount Vernon, and also work with Bob Bladhurst, who is the project manager on this.
Okay. Well, my question is, now that we have this drawing that shows the gate setback, if you look at the, I'm looking at the large survey map, in building nine in the northeast corner, for example, the gate with the 20-foot setback from the right-of-way, appears that a corner of that is in conflict with a portion of the building?
That's correct, on building number nine, 20-foot setback is not possible. It actually doesn't, it doesn't hit the building, but it hits that owner's property, because they have a 20-foot parking spot behind, and it actually is going to hit just the very end of their garage, right there.
So, that was my question, that long, narrow part that parallels the length of the building is, is a covered parking area?
It is, it's a garage and a covered parking area.
Okay.
The garage is first, and then there's a carport next to it, all the way down the building.
It looks like similarly, building six would be impacted that way, as well?
Correct, and so would building 19. Actually, there's a building on each floor that would have an impact on a 20-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions at the board, of either the applicant or the staff? Yes, Mr. Burkhardt?
The additional information that's been supplied in terms of the plot plan shows the 30-foot setback clear vision triangle. In listening to the minutes from last meeting, it seemed that there was some thought that angling those would have ill effect in terms of being too close to buildings, and it appears to me that there really isn't any harm by truncating those corners. It doesn't appear that they substantially impinge upon maintenance access around the building.
No, they really don't, but, you know, our position is that it does kind of impinge on, especially those corner buildings, where there isn't that much square footage, you know, between the fence and the building. You know, we think that if that fence is cut clear of the corner, you know, it's going to get that owner, it's just going to feel like they're getting a little bit more space. We also thought that if we do have to abide by the clear vision, that it also becomes more of a maintenance issue for us. You know, we believe that that triangle is actually going to get full of garbage and probably become a slowdown for the city in the winter time.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Minks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff by the board? If not, the matter rests with the board, I mean, could I have a positive motion in Mr. Vig, you've indicated, I'm sorry, would you please make your motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case 2010-069, I move that we grant a variance from AMC 21.45.020 to allow a proposed fence on the property line to encroach the clear vision area, and from AMC 21.45.080x4 to allow turning and maneuvering in the public right-of-way and not on private property, subject to conditions one through four, as noted on page D of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhardt, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Well, it's really coming down for me to the standard number seven, as far as the de minimis amount of variance requested, and I think it's, I believe that the clear vision can be preserved and not significantly impact the condo association and their residents, and so, for that reason, I intend to vote against the variance. And with regard to the variance for turning and allowing, and turning and maneuvering in the public right-of-way, I similarly am concerned, and the traffic and planning has recommended against it. I think there could be some larger, perhaps not 20 feet, but 15 to 17 feet, something like that, that could still be provided and not impact the buildings, and so I don't believe that this is the minimum that's possible, and I intend to vote against that variance
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhardt?
I guess I find that standard number one is met. I think in view of this being a large tract, unlike the other tracts, that the combined ownership of the homeowner association is one full city block. It's quite different than individual small lots, where fences, we commonly get variance requests for fences, would create a patchwork. So, I think standard number one is met. I don't believe standard two is met, that, I don't think this creates a hardship on the property owner. All the other properties in this area meet the clear vision triangle requirements, and also the setback requirements for vehicle maneuvering. I think standard three is met. I don't think the hardship is self-imposed, and I don't think it's a monetary inconvenience. Actually, what they're trying to do here, in terms of the gates, is rather expensive to provide security, so I think standard three is met. I think standard four is met. We haven't had any testimony in the previous meeting that convinces me that it would adversely affect adjacent properties. Standard five is met. I think that the fence itself is fairly handsome, in terms of not obscuring, having the wrought iron elements being approximately four inches on center, has a lot of free area. I think standard six is met. I don't think it adversely affects the health, safety, and welfare. But I agree with Mr. Vig that I don't think standard seven is met, in that I don't think this variance is necessary to make possible a reasonable use of the land. I don't see that there's any compelling reason in terms of why the clear vision triangle can't be met. In regards to the other variance with the gates, if they really want to put in the gates, they could reconstruct the driveways and move those either east or west, so that there's the additional maneuvering area, and they don't affect those garage buildings. Quite a number of years ago, we had a similar variance, and although we look on each variance request on its own merits, there was either a condo association or a rental project on that, I don't recall which, over off of East 20th, just east of the Seward Highway, the south section of Fairview, just north of Chester Creek, on the other side of the highway from Cal Worthington Ford. They came with a similar request to put a wrought iron fence six feet high in the front yard setback, and that was granted by this board. They did not choose to put gates on their project. They had, they allowed vehicle traffic coming in and out of their site. They did have manned gates. It selected places in their fencing with locks, so that only the residents would be able to come and go in terms of the pedestrian access, but they left their vehicle access open, and I think that worked reasonably well for them. Even though it's none of my business, I question whether this is really a good thing for the residents. Anybody coming to visit is basically shut out, unless somebody is home and able to answer the cell phone and come out. There's no way physically for somebody to, a visitor or a delivery person, to get in contact with any of the homeowners, unless they're going to install a new communication system out by the fence. But be that as may, I think the issues here in terms of the clear vision triangle and the need for maneuvering space are not met, and I think there are conforming alternatives in terms of reconstructing those driveways and moving those 15 or 20 feet to give relief from the building, so I don't plan on voting for the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Are there any other board members wishing to comment? Anyone at all? I also do not intend to support the motion for the reasons brought, discussed by Mr. Vig and Mr. Burkhardt, and I concur with their findings on the specific standards not being met. For a motion to pass, it's a requirement that there is a majority of a fully constituted board, which would be, it would need five affirmative votes for any case. That motion fails. That was quick. With, I have any six no votes. I must read for the record, any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. That brings us to our, moving on, there are no items on our regular agenda. However, we are moving to our public hearings section, and before we hear our first case, I'd like to read the Order of Business for variance hearings. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed 10 minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the board, and the chair asks for a positive motion from the board. That brings us to our first case this evening, case 2010-052. The petitioner is John Reese and Sandra Stevens. Is the petitioner here this evening? They've indicated they are present. Could we have from staff the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was advertised, posted, and 56 public hearing notices were mailed for this case. We had one returned in response expressing some concern, and the Parks and Recreation Department sent a response as part of the actual review, not part of the public hearing notices, objecting to the requested variance. However, in reading their comments, it's apparent that they didn't understand the full extent of the variance, and that park property is not directly negatively impacted, so just keep that in mind when you read the Park and Recreation comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case was originally heard back in June, but a complete and proper property survey had not been submitted, so it was not possible to determine all of the encroachments and the magnitude of the encroachments. The board postponed the meeting until such time as we could have an actual survey with the proposed house indicated on it, showing the exact encroachments. That drawing has been submitted, and that is on the backside of the front page, labeled B, as in Bravo. See the property survey and the proposed house and garage, the creek, the creek setback area, and so forth. The original drawings are a little bit further back in the package, in the original portion of the package, on pages three and four. The drawing, and this is just for the sake of comparison for the board, the drawing on page four is the original drawing submitted by the applicant, the one that was not based on a true survey. The drawing on page three is a drawing based on a stream survey done by Watershed Management for the muni, and that was a little bit better, but it's still not a true survey, so the applicant has now submitted the drawing in your package on page B. Going right to the seven standards, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard, in the department's opinion, is not substantially met. The stream is an obvious physical issue on the property, but it does not appear to be related to the need for the variance. The stream has a setback of 25 feet, but that 25-foot setback is completely encompassed within the rear yard setback of 50 feet. So, there is no additional denial of buildable area due to the stream's location. Because of the physical circumstances, standard two, strict application would create an exceptional or undue hardship. The standard is not substantially met. Standard one is not substantially met, and we could not find other physical circumstances directly needed for this variance. The proposed footprint of the building and the garage are simply too large for the buildable area on the property, given its unusual shape and yard setbacks as an R6 property. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is not substantially met. Again, based on standard one, there are not sufficient physical conditions directly related to the need for the variance. And the second part of that standard, the lot was platted in 1985 with the creek, zoning, yard setbacks, and other development limitations already in place. A buyer should have been aware of the limitations and yard setbacks placed by the physical condition of the lot at the time of the purchase. Therefore, the need for variance is a result of the actions of the applicant. Standard four, the variance will not adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. That standard is at least partially met. The structure of footprint does meet most of the setbacks. The footprint is within a foot or two of the stream setback, and that may pose some construction problems, but that's noted elsewhere in the report and in the conditions. The lot does appear to be susceptible to stream flooding, and construction this close to the stream could have negative effects both up and downstream. Drainage also appears to be a condition on this property. There are no structure separation violations, however. Due to these other limitations, we can only say that the standard is partially met. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional. This is a single-family neighborhood. The homes have garages. The use is not unusual for this property. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the municipality of Anchorage. As in standard four, the standard is not substantially met. The issue cited in standard four also applies to standard six. In addition, for this property, because it will be on well and septic, the location of the septic system must be 100 feet from the stream, and this could negatively affect the stream and downstream properties. If the board finds for approval, there is a condition that prior to any construction activity, the septic system need, location needs to be reviewed with onsite systems. And standard seven, the variance, if granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard is not substantially met. The total construction for this property consists of a house, garage, and deck. We do not have floor plans of the home, but the applicant is proposing a fifteen-hundred to sixteen-hundred square foot house with a fifty-by-eighty-foot footprint, excuse me, fifty-by-eighty-foot rectangle in which the building will be located, located near the west end of the property. The applicant, the application states that the house will have, will take up a good deal of the depth of the lot, and that there is a fairly substantial deck on the property, although that deck has been reduced from the original submittal. Taken together, though, the deck, the house, and the garage do not appear to be the minimum necessary for a reasonable use of this land, and a smaller combination of house, garage, and deck could be proposed to minimize all of the setback issues. Should the board find for approval, the department has conditions back at the front of the report on pages C and D, and those are to a degree different than the original report because the structure changed location fairly drastically. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there questions of staff by the board? Mr. Burkhart?
Yes, Mr. Barrett. In terms of the plot plan that's been submitted, and the department's recommendation number one, I guess I just want to be clear, is the, is the variance for the front and rear yard setback conditioned by the distances, or is it also conditioned by the proposed site plan here and that the petitioner would need to follow the site plan that they have submitted?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burkhart, we try to apply both. We often round up on the number when we're talking about a number of feet in the setback, but we also have the standard language that the variance is as essentially reflected in the as-built and plans, so it's both.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, thank you. John Reese. J-H-M-R-E-E-S-E.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You have ten minutes for your presentation, and as we've mentioned, we must find that all seven standards have been met, so if you will have your presentation directed towards the seven standards.
Yes. We've been through this before a couple months ago. This is about the front and backyard setbacks. The lot is a hundred and twelve point five feet wide, which is a non-conforming lot. The recommendations indicate it's a conforming lot because, as I say, you can use the road easement to add depth. I don't believe that's correct, but if it is correct, by adding that depth, it seems to me that we should be able to take advantage of that for the problem with the nemesis, which is a problem for the setbacks. We have the survey now. We know the distances. I, the issue is about the encroachment that still appears here. There is no other. Sorry, excuse me a second. There is no encroachment into the creek setback. It never has been a request encroachment of street setback, and the ordinance about street back, creek setback says there should be no substantial encroachment within twenty-five feet. That's what the ordinance says, and it says substantial encroachment means clearing it, like cutting down trees, or excavation. None of that has ever been in any of my proposals. I was vague about what we wanted. They interpreted my vagueness as wanting a twenty-foot deck at one point, which seems kind of bizarre, but we now have the survey and the as-built from the handover. It would be an eight-foot wide deck, not encroaching on the creek setback, but it will be within the fifty-foot setback. The house itself would encroach as much as two feet at the apex of the triangle on the creek side of the fifty-foot setback, and then there would be encroachment on the front yard setback of about, same amount roughly, about ten feet. And then the garage would come out a little bit further. Now, that footprint for the house is thirty by sixty feet on the drawing, not the fifty by eighty or whatever it was originally, so that's smaller than Mr. Barrett mentioned. The sixteen-hundred-foot house goes in there. It's a two-story house, so the actual footprint of the house is going to be much smaller. It does need to be thirty feet wide there. We need that encroachment. It won't be nearly that long, which probably will allow us to pull the garage back also. Mr. Barrett pointed out to me in one of my discussions with him that commercial driveways are supposed to have twenty feet, and this is less than that. It's not a requirement for residents, but I agree with him. That's a good idea, so I can probably pull the garage back once we get the house plans and that the actual footprint of the house is going to be much smaller than that. I discussed with staff what the problem is about constructing next to a twenty-five-foot setback, and when I was talking to, could not answer the question when I asked him the authority for saying you can't step on the no substantial disturbance zone. There is no such law. That is a misinterpretation of that ordinance. It comes up again and again, and it came up in this letter, comment that we got that Mr. Barrett mentioned. There is something in there that I'm going to be doing something terrible in the creek setback. And Mr. Barrett was correct that, you know, he understood that was missed the point. It's a deck, the power in the supports, the deck's probably going to be two or three feet away from the edge. It's going to be two or three feet away from the edge of the twenty-five-foot setback. And that's what it's on about. All the rest of the objections seem to follow from those issues. It's a non-conforming lot. It's non-conforming because the city took the other half of the lot to make the greenbelt. That's why it's such a funny shape. Has seven neighbors down the road between my house and Kelly, this place and Kelly Ranch Road. Six of them have construction within fifty feet of the creek. Now, they're not all setback problems because some of those lots still extend across the creek, but to have this consistent with the other neighbors, which is all I'm really asking for, I don't think this is a problem. I would be the only person except for one who has a deck of ninety, fifty feet away or more from the creek. That's the nature of it. As far as the creek setbacks concerned, magically every one of those houses has a cleared area where there are no trees. I'm not sure how that happened, but it happened before I got there. I believe that everything is met. The minimum size, I think, is clear. We want to build a small house there. We haven't gotten plans yet because we don't know how much room we have. If we don't get a variance, we have to build a fifteen-foot wide house, and that's not wide enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Burkhart?
Yes, I'm looking at your, your plot plan, and to the, the west side of the house is marked a deck on grade.
Yes. Like a patio or something.
Okay. And you are aware that if you're more than thirty inches off the ground, that that, that isn't allowed to be built into the setback, so I guess I just wanted you-
Oh, yeah.
-very clear that, yes, a concrete or a paver deck that, or a deck even that's elevated that's less than thirty inches above the surrounding ground is allowed, but I'm not sure if you've got a topo and you've worked out finished floor elevations and all that sort of stuff, but-
Yeah, when I went over to, to get the, the house drawings, you know, this, let's see here from the person doing the house plans, that was her idea to stick that out there. She thought it looked pretty cool, so when she pointed out to me it had to be on the, on the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Reese? I, I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Reese. In the, in your application, you had referenced the soils as, as one of the reasons for needing to situate the house where it is. However, was there, were there ever any, why couldn't the septic system be put where your house is located, where your proposed house is located? And have you had any soils information done?
Yes, the, the drain field for the septic system has to be a hundred feet from the edge of the creek. I only have that on my, there is a, this is Mr. Barrett, you've got test holes, there are two test holes on there. The one to the left is the one that worked, it percolated, and that is the only area that can be, where we can put a drain field because it has to be a hundred feet from wells and a hundred feet from the creek, and that was the only area. But the one, the one test hole did percolate. We can't really put it anywhere else without getting in trouble.
So I guess not, if I get, if I can learn to speak and then ask you my question, to place the septic system, say, for argument purposes, to the left of where your proposed garage is, would be too close, that would be within the hundred-foot creek setback?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. My second question, when I look, and I, I do, this, this proposed plot plan is a whole lot easier to look at than your previous, so I appreciate having this to look at, but you kind of touched on my, my concern that I had regarding the front yard setback where it's only a sixteen-point-three-foot setback from the front of your garage to the property line.
Right.
As I look at your layout, I'm curious, why couldn't you just set the garage right next to your house, the, the living area of the house, and you'd have the, effectively the same setback of-
Well, that's where I was thinking, yeah, I think that's probably what we would do because we need more driveway. I think it would be better to have more driveway, and the sixty-by-thirty-foot box where the house goes, the actual footprint would be less than that because it's a two-story house. So I can't move that back. I do intend to do that.
I guess the, what I'd like to know is what is the setback of the front of the house, and where would that be setback? What would be the distance of that?
Pretty close to where it is, or the house needs to be about thirty feet wide, and that's the, that's the, the depth of that box, so it would be-
So if I look at that, the garage depth is, is twenty-four feet, and then sixteen-point-three, so roughly, the front of the house is roughly forty feet from the top.
Yeah, roughly thirty feet from the top of the line, and the, the road right away there is actually eighty feet wide, that's the end of the road. I mean, it's obviously more than is needed, although the park people, I suspect, actually I know because they said so, want to put some parking spaces in there.
Thank you. Mr. Vega?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, you asked my question, so, no need, thanks.
Okay. Are there other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, you'll have a seat.
The only other thing is I have no problem with the conditions, and if, if you want to put in some language about the house and the footprint being minimized and being the way I've described it, certainly you might have a problem with that either.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Thank you. If you have a seat, we will open this for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all wishing to testify on this case? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick comment about the proximity of the deck and the house to the setback. The restrictions on what can be done within the setback are rather severe. It's not much you can do, and it is just that in our experience, when you have a structure such as a deck adjacent to the setback and the house within eight feet of the setback, the construction crews, the builders and so forth, are almost necessarily going to get into that setback when they come around to work on the back of the house. In the cases we've seen, it's almost unavoidable. So that's the reason for a abundance of caution due to the proximity of the deck and the house to the setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Does the applicant, applicant have any rebuttal?
Yes. Wait.
Mr. Reese, I can't, we can't hear you until you speak into the microphone.
In the packet, there are a bunch of photographs, and I believe there's a photograph of what it looks like. It's got fifteen, page fifteen. The person who took this photograph is standing right in the middle of the twenty-five-foot setback, right to the person's left would be where the deck is, which is, it looks like a road because it is a road. It's been there since, at least the twenty-two years that I've owned the lot. It looks like that, there's dandelions and grass, even if a backhoe garden is to drive along there for some reason. I mean, it's going to be too far to dig a foot in, which is way over here, but even if you drove along there, that's not going to disturb anything. And the ordinance says substantial disturbance like clearcutting or excavating. That's, that's not a problem. And you don't put it in the conditions, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Mr. Burkhart?
In case two zero one zero dash zero five two, in the R6 district, the variance from AMC twenty-one point four oh point zero eight zero, which requires a fifty-foot front and fifty-foot rear yard setback to allow a proposed structure, and now I'm going to read from page C, and I'm going to insert one here, a maximum front yard setback for the attached garage of sixteen feet, where the code requires a fifty-foot setback, which is an encroachment of thirty-four feet or sixty-seven percent at the greatest point of encroachment, and be a maximum rear yard setback for the deck of thirty-two feet when code requires a fifty-foot setback, which is an encroachment of eighteen feet or thirty-six percent at the greatest point of encroachment, and condition the variance approval on items one, two, three, four, five, and six on page C and D of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Fink, you can hear you would second that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Burkhart?
I'm inclined to support the variance request in relation to standard number one. I think there's a basic premise that each lot within the municipality is intended to be a buildable lot. We have a lot here that is non-conforming. I think that's an item of significance. It's the end of a road. I think that also has some characteristics that affect the, the front yard setback. We don't anticipate there's going to be a whole lot of traffic here, even if the, you know, some spaces are installed for parking in the PLI lot, that this isn't a very accessible, busy location. So I think the, the physical circumstances here deal with the lot configuration, its non-conforming nature, part of the lot being- nature, part of the lot being taken by the municipality in terms of the plating process and that it's at the end of the road. I think standard two is met. I think the strict application of the code basically makes this an unbuildable lot once you combine the wet areas that are noted on... Let's see, page four of the packet and the petitioner's testimony about the failed septic test hole and test hole number one, which are also indicated on this old drawing that has been superseded. But the wet area and the location of the test holes, I think, is still approximately accurate. So I think standard two is met in that, given the configuration, I think a variance is necessary to make this a buildable lot. I think standard three is met, that I don't think these conditions here are self-imposed, the natural conditions of the creek, the roadway, dead end, the odd configuration, the geotechnical aspects of the lot, the test holes and the wet soils. So I think standard three is met. Standard four is met. I don't see this adversely affecting adjacent property. We haven't had any testimony to the... That it would. I believe this owner testified at our previous meeting that he owns the adjacent lot to the east, I believe. So there shouldn't be any impact there. I think standard five is met, as staff indicates that this isn't a use variance. Standard six, I think, is at least partially met. I do have some concerns in terms of the rear setback and the relative proximity to the stream. But as you can see from the variance request, that the petitioner has chosen to cite it such that his greater variance that he's requesting is for the front yard, and there's a smaller variance request for the rear yard. So I think he's trying to find the sweet spot in terms of looking at the different issues here. I think he's actually done a good job in terms of locating the building and the deck, although staff is concerned about access around the building during the construction. I could easily see them phasing and constructing the building and essentially constructing the deck afterwards, after the building's in place. And so any, you know, backhoe and excavation could happen or would happen before the deck is put in. So I'm not too concerned in terms of those logistics. And I think standard seven is met. Just echoing my previous comments, I think that to meet the highest and best use, I think all the private property and anchorage, you know, should be buildable. And looking on balance in terms of all the constraints on this property, it being its odd configuration, dead end of a road, I think the impacts here are minimal. So I intend on supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I concur with Mr. Burkhart's thorough explanation and analysis on the meeting of the standards. So I'm not going to repeat that. I do agree with him, and I intend on supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other board members who care to comment?
I guess I do have one comment that I'm concerned. I intend to support the motion regarding the rear yard setback, but I am still concerned that the front yard only having a 16.3-foot setback, I don't see how standard seven is met for that, for that condition. I would concur that there is and would support a set... An encroachment into the front yard setback, but I find that that garage placement is... Would place a garage at a substandard setback for even a, an R1 zoned lot of 20-foot. However, I don't believe I can make a motion or an amendment. So I'd be interested in hearing further staff or further board comments regarding that standard with respect to that, with respect to that front yard variance. I do concur with Mr. Burkhart and Mr. Fink regarding the rear yard setback. But as stated right now, I don't find that I could support the motion due to the, my feelings that that front yard setback is not the minimum.
Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I too share your concerns about that front yard setback. And the applicant indicated the possibility of constructing a home with a garage that would require approximately a 10-foot encroachment rather than a 34-foot or whatever it works out to be. And so it concerns me as well, and I would... I have a little bit of an issue with that as well, not being the minimum. And the rear yard, to me, is not a concern. I do also wonder if a friendly amendment might be considered by Mr. Burkhart and Mr. Fink on condition number four, that at the time that the second as-built is prepared by the registered land surveyor, that the 25-foot stream setback be flagged and noted as such on that as-built prior to... And this would be prior to any construction taking place, so that there's no misunderstanding of where that line is.
I would accept a friendly amendment in terms of an additional condition requiring the petitioner to have the stream setback staked, as Mr. Vig suggested.
Mr. Fink.
I'd concur with the friendly amendment to that condition.
Thank you. Mr. Vig, do you have any further comments or... Mr. Burkhart?
In relation to the chair's question about the front yard setback, in view of the petitioner's willingness to possibly set the garage back from the road, that's why I inserted the word maximum. If the board members feel strongly about that, I guess I would urge somebody to make a motion to increase the front yard setback from 16 feet to possibly 20 feet. But personally, I don't think that's necessary. And the reason I don't is that the petitioner has indicated that the right-of-way is 80 feet wide. And in my mind, a typical right-of-way for something like this, I think, might be more like 60 feet. And so given that anything that's going to be constructed in here, in this dead-end road, isn't likely to be very wide, the 16 feet personally doesn't bother me. But if other board members feel that way, that maybe we should, you know, feel free to make an amendment to that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there any other board members wishing to comment? Seeing none, I appreciate Mr. Burkhart's comment regarding that seventh, regarding that variance and that seventh standard. For his comments and discussions regarding the right-of-way and the location of this lot, I actually do intend to support the motion now. So with that, please vote. That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. Again, I need to read for the record, "Any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision." That brings us to our next case. Case 2010-082. The petitioner, Michelle Chase, is the petitioner here. She's indicated, she's present. Could we have the sufficiency of notice by staff, please?
123 public hearing notices were mailed, three letters of support, and one in opposition have been received. No community council response was received.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Could you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are three errors in the staff report. I'd like to point out two of them right now and then the third during further in my comments. So on the first page, at the bottom, under topography, it says level, and that's not correct. It should say sloping. On the first page towards the bottom, the topography's sloping. And then on the bottom of page four, standard number four, the first sentence under where it says the standard is met, there has been no objection from the neighborhood. It should say there's been one objection from the neighborhood. And then there's one other error, but I'll point it out in just a moment. Page seven has an as-built of the property. And then on the following pages, there are some excellent photographs provided by the petitioner showing what the fence looks like. Page 11 is an aerial photo of the subdivision. And then page 24, 25, 26, and 27, these are the comments from the public, the people who wrote in for and against the granting of the variance. The petitioner is requesting a variance to allow a six-foot tall fence within the front yard setback. The maximum allowed fence height is four feet in the front yard setback. The property is a sloping corner lot. The lot slopes uphill to the north. Shannon Circle is located south of the lot and is therefore lower than the property. Winter Chase Drive abuts the east lot boundary. For standard number one, the standard does not appear to be met. There are no creeks or wetlands affecting the property. Easements do not appear to encumber the property any more than any of the neighboring properties. The lot has two physical challenges. The lot slopes uphill to the north. Also, the property is a corner lot, which has a front yard setback of 20 feet and a secondary front yard setback of 10 feet. Neither of these two physical challenges gives rise to the need for a fence height variance of two feet. In regards to the slope, the house is uphill or up from the street, from Shannon Circle. The next sentence in the report is not correct. It says, "If it was the other way around and the house was downhill from the street, then the petitioner would have an argument that a six-foot tall fence is needed for privacy." But that is the other way around, is not the case. It could be argued that because the house is set uphill from the street, then there may be a need for a two-foot higher fence in order to provide some privacy. The intent of this property owner is to provide a privacy fence. So the wording there is just a little confusing. It could be sort of argued either way. There are no other illegal fences that were observed in the immediate neighborhood. The slope for this lot is similar to the slope for other lots on the street and in this neighborhood. Standard number two is not met. Although there are physical challenges affecting the lot, they do not necessitate the variance. There's nothing preventing the owner from adhering to the maximum fence height requirement of four feet in the front yard. Standard number three is not met. There are peculiarities of the lot arising from a unique natural physical condition. This is a sloping corner lot. However, the fence height requirement may still be met. There is... The need for the variance is a result of the actions of the applicant. When the petitioner applied for a building permit to construct a garage, the existing four-foot tall fence was found to be located within the Shannon Circle right-of-way. The petitioner removed the four-foot tall fence from the right-of-way and built a new six-foot tall privacy fence on the lot line. The fence height violation was discovered by code enforcement after the neighbors complained that the remnants of the old fence were piled up within the right-of-way. Standard number four is not met. I'm sorry, standard number four is met. There's been only one objection from the neighborhood. The standard assumes the violation will not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to public welfare if it is granted. There are no structure separation violations with this lot and neighboring properties. Drainage and runoff do not appear to be an issue. Traffic vision triangles are not affected. Standard number five is also met. The requested variance is dimensional, not a use variance. A privacy fence does not change the character of the zoning district. Standard number six is also met. There are no health or safety issues. Standard number seven is not met. There's no reason why the petitioner cannot meet the four-foot fence height requirement. Standards one, two, three, and seven are not met. Therefore, the department recommends denial of the variance. If after the public hearing, the board establishes findings that each of the seven standards is substantially met, the department recommends the approval be subject to the conditions one, two, three, and four on pages five and six of the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I do have one question. So you mentioned that there was an existing fence, but just for clarification, that was only four feet tall. The fence that was located in the right-of-way was four feet tall?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Michelle Chase, M-A-C-H-E-I-E-C-H-A-S-C.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. You have 10 minutes for your presentation, and we must find that all seven standards are met. So if you'll address the standards, please.
I would like to first off say I have some photos of fences in the neighborhood. And I would disagree that I'm not at a disadvantage living on a corner lot. I had no idea, because the neighbors have six-foot fences, that I was doing anything in violation. The other thing that's a disadvantage for me is what you consider my front yard is where I consider my back, or the front of the property, Shannon Circle, is not where I have my mail delivered. I live on the Intercept Drive. It's not where I have the front door. It's where my kitchen door opens up. The house has been there since 1959, and that has been the case. So when you talk about my front lawn, I'm talking about the backyard. We have a lot of traffic in Shannon Circle. People drive quickly. I thought that I was correcting all the complaints in the permit. I moved it back out of the right-of-way. I improved the visibility of the... I improved the visibility of the corner, and I put up an attractive fence. The neighbors all like the fence. They're very complimentary, and I would disagree. There is enough of a slope that I do not have privacy with a four-foot fence. That's really -- I just feel I'm at a disadvantage, and I have pictures for everybody and addresses if you'd like to see them. The neighbors can have this sort of fence, and I can't because I live on a corner lot.
Ms. Chase, if you wish, you can turn those photos in. We'll need to retain them for thirty days.
And that's fine. I make copies for everyone.
Sure. If you bring the photo, we'll need to log one set in for the file. Where did you get the next one? Is that for the file? Ms. Chase, do you have additional?
I don't have -- if you have questions, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Chase raises a very good point about this being a corner lot, and it's difficult to determine which yard would be the front yard for this lot. The prevailing yard pattern seems to suggest that the front yard would be to Shannon Circle. But it could be easily argued that the prevailing yard pattern, that the front yard should be to Winter Chase Drive. But the yard setback, the structure meets the front yard setback of twenty feet to either street. So yard setback has nothing to do with it. It's just a question of putting up a six-foot fence on either lot boundary that is the issue. She's put it on the -- the fence exists on the lot boundary, and so setbacks are not at issue here. It's just a matter of the height of the fence.
And I can add to that. It was -- that house was there before any of the houses in Shannon Circle. It was built in 1959. It's the McKinnis homestead. So they built my backyard.
Thank you, Ms. Chase. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Chase, in your application on Page Thirty, you talk about traffic, noise, and headlights. Can you address that? I mean, do you have headlights? If that fence was not six feet, would you have headlights shining into your home, given the slope over the property? I was unclear on that. How tall was the fence that was there previously?
It was four feet.
And with that four-feet fence, you did have headlights coming into your home?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know, any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Burkhart?
I have a question of staff. Could you, for everyone's benefit, can you explain what kind of yards there are on a corner lot?
Thank you for the question through the chair, Mr. Burkhart. So on a corner lot, you have two front yards, and then you have two side yards. There's no rear yard. So in this case, we're, you know, the department is saying the front yard is Shannon Circle. She has to have a twenty-foot front yard setback in the R1 district. The secondary front yard, you have to have half of that, which is ten feet. So on Winter Set Drive, then the setback requirement is ten feet. Now, it's a five-foot setback for the two side yards, okay? Now, if it was the other way around, and Winter Chase was the front yard, then that would be a twenty-foot front yard setback, and then Shannon Circle would be a ten-foot front yard setback. But so it's all irrelevant because either street, it's considered to be a front yard, whether it's the primary front yard or the secondary front yard, they're both still front yards. And the fence is on the lot line in one of those two front yards, and so it just doesn't matter. It's the fact that if it's greater than four feet on either of those two yards, then it's not a legal height fence. Thank you.
Mr. Wieg?
Following up on that, Mr. McLaughlin, it seems to me it would make a difference which is the determined front and secondary, or primary and secondary. If a petitioner wanted to move a six-foot-high fence to the setback line, they would, in one case, need to move it ten feet, and in the other, twenty feet, as an option to solve this problem.
Through the chair, that is correct. I wasn't considering that option. I was just looking at the existence of the fence on the lot boundary and not thinking about you could move that same-height fence to the back of the setback, and yes, then you could make it any height you want. And yes, in that case, which one is considered to be the primary and the secondary front yard would matter. Yes, that's correct. That's a good point.
Are there any other questions of the petitioner? Ms. Chase, I do have questions. You've read the staff packet. Have you had a chance to read through the staff packet? We, as a board, need to find that all seven standards are met in order to grant a variance. And staff has indicated they don't believe standards One, Two, Three, and Seven are met. Do you have any testimony that you could make regarding on why you feel that those specific standards are met?
Well...
Could you speak into the microphone, please, so we can -- thanks.
The house is where it was built in 1959. I have no -- I can't change that. I feel that I am at a disadvantage because it is a corner lot, that I'm being penalized with rules that are not imposed on the neighbors. And, you know, I'd be curious what the history of the four-foot rule is.
Well, we, as a board, aren't here to answer questions. We're here to act on the case that's before us. That's something that staff, you know, has probably referred to you, or hopefully you've referred to Title Twenty-One, to look at that.
It just says four feet. It doesn't give any reason. I've read it. I can read.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? If there's no other questions, Mr. Wieg?
Well, if you desire to maintain that six-foot-high fence for purposes of screening your house from lights and things, is it feasible to move it ten feet off the property line and locate it there instead? Would that work, or would it harm your...
It's feasible, except I'd have to learn.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Chase. If you'll have a seat, we will open the public hearing on this case. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify?
I am.
Please come forward. If you will state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Robert Weiner, W.E.I.N.E.R.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I reside at 1620 Winter Set Drive, which is to the southeast of Michelle's property, across the entrance into Shannon Circle. I purchased the property in 1971, and in all the occasions I've had to go to that property, the access that I've had is at Winter Set Drive. This fence is not in the front yard by any way, shape, or form. That is not the front yard of our property. I am definitely speaking in favor of the variance. I think it actually improves the appearance of the neighborhood, and I'm the one that looks out my front window at that fence. And I agree that a fence that's in four feet high there would not provide the privacy of the lot, because in fact, as was pointed out, the lot does slope. Whereas the old fence was -- would provide privacy from the road, because it was actually in the road. A four-foot fence setback as far as this one would not, as far as the backyard goes. I'm personally surprised that it's determined that it can be a secondary front or a front yard and still have the same limitations. And I think as the information you have before you, that certainly has not been traced in a lot of construction in that neighborhood. Personally, I think it's a great improvement, and is what I consider a neighborhood that's most directly affected by it, in that I look at it daily out my front window. I think it's a great fence, and I would hope that you would see fit to correct the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Are there any questions of Mr. Burkhart?
Yeah, I guess my question is, from a technical viewpoint, that any time a lot borders a right-of-way or a street, it's a front yard, whether it's a primary front yard or a secondary front yard. Basically, the definition is if it -- the way it's interpreted by Title Twenty-One is that if you're bordering a street, it's a front yard. And I guess with that statement, I guess the question I have is that there's any number of corner lots I can see in the area of the -- on Page Eleven of the packet, there's quite a few cul-de-sacs, and so there are quite a number of other houses here with two frontages on adjacent or, you know, corner lots. Are you aware of any of those, you know, that have fences constructed such as this?
I have seen them walking through the neighborhood, yes. I can't give you the street address or the location, whether they're within the twenty feet of the property line. I can't comment on that. I'd say something that the public would forget, or maybe regret. My lot actually borders Shannon Circle also. I have a fence that's equal to my house line. It's a chain link fence, but it certainly is not any twenty feet from Shannon Circle. It's certainly -- it's on my property line, and it is setback. I don't consider my fence to be offensive, and it's a chain link fence. It doesn't move problems. I would really doubt that the purpose of the ordinance is to prevent people from putting any sort of privacy or property-defining fence in a lot far away from it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Sir, if I could just ask a question. I haven't been to this property in a couple months. Can you remind me, is that property -- what's the height of your -- it's a chain link fence, right?
Yes.
What's the height of that?
You know, I think it's a standard six-foot fence, quite frankly. I have a double-leaf door so that I can access my backyard if so required. It's just a continuation of the fence that I have on my side property line to my house to give me security and privacy.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? If you would please come forward. And if you'll state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Willie Skoll, W.E.I.N.E.R. And I stay across the street from Ms. Chase. And everything over their house is from Winter Set Drive, and their driveway is right across from my driveway. And that fence is a better improvement than the fence she had, because when I used to go over their house and sit down, people couldn't run the intersected street, and everybody's lights are shining to their dining room, and their fence would block some of the -- this new fence they got blocks some of the lighting, because it really is their backyard. And I don't know how they got it to be their front yard. It's because they're on the corner. But it's a really beautiful fence, and it's a beautiful house. And she do need some privacy. It's her and her daughter, and I think that fence is -- it's a pretty good fence, you know, and I think they need that for protection.
Thank you, Mr. Skoll. Are there any questions of Mr. Skoll? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Please come forward. If you'll state and spell your name for the record.
Carol Harkness, H.A.R.K.N.E.S.S.
Thank you, Ms. Harkness. You have three minutes.
I am the neighbor to the north, the next door neighbor to the north of the property, and we've been there since 1993 and have been friends with Michelle all this time and have been there for -- cookouts and backyard events, which were always on that side yard. And it was just very exposed, and the slope of the lot is such that people can see around in with a four-foot fence. If we looked at the new Asbilt, it shows a very nice tile patio that she put in a couple of years ago, and a fence setback farther would take away all the yard between the patio and Shannon Circle. The other thing that hasn't really been mentioned is that a six-foot fence is very much of a deterrent to moose getting in the yard, very rarely over a four-foot fence. And Michelle has some red dabs, and, you know, big moose and red dabs don't mix. And it's also easy for somebody to -- a person to get over a four-foot fence, and deer don't want them, whereas a six-foot fence is not that -- it's not the case. than whereas a six-foot fence is not that, is not the case. So I would wish that you would consider the hardship of the property owner in that she would use a lot of privacy and use of her yard. The other thing in the as-built, it looks like there is a pretty good, way back in the northwest corner, it looks like there's a fairly good stretch of useful property, and it really isn't. It slopes up very steeply from about the fifty feet or so forward of the back fence. And I know that because we're on the uphill, way uphill side from her house. And so I think that's just the extent of my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Harkness. Is there, are there any questions? Mr. Fink?
Mr. Chairman, so your lot is the one directly north of her?
Directly north, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Harkness. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Ms. Chase, do you have any rebuttal? She's indicated she does not. Thank you, Ms. Chase. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from the board member, please? Ms. Denny.
Yes, in case two thousand ten, rush, zero-two, Michelle Chase, Chase, excuse me. I'm recommending for approval of the variance from ALC twenty-nine point four-five point one-one-zero to allow fence tiles in our by-code.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. And is that subject to the conditions one, two, three, and four on pages five and six?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Fink, you've indicated you second?
I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Ms. Denny, would you care to speak to your motion, please?
In standard number one, I believe there is an exception due to the topography of the lot and the slope of the lot. And looking at the other information that she's brought, that there are other fences in that neighborhood which exceed the four-foot high fence height. Standard number two, I believe that the, that that standard is met because of the physical challenges and the way the house is sided, even though that's not technically a reason, but the fact that if she did move the fence back ten feet, she would not have a yard anymore. Standard number three, the standard, I believe, is at least partially met because of the circumstances of the size of the lot, the height of where the house sits on the lot, and the fact that she's got two front yards. I agree with staff on standard number four, that it is met. It's the minimum objection from the neighbors. Standard number five, I believe that is also met. Standard number six, I agree with staff that it's met. And standard number seven, I disagree with staff in that the minimum six-foot-high fence would allow Ms. Chase to at least have some privacy and a better sense of security within her home. But I recommend for approval of the variance.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I intend on supporting the motion, and I concur with Ms. Denny's comments. I do believe that the slope and topography of the lot are exceptional, extraordinary circumstances. I mean, there was testimony from not just her, but others, that when vehicles drive by the lot, the light shined directly into her home dining room. Dining room, I believe, is what we heard. So that slope, the topography, I believe, establishes, I believe, first standard. And second, because of those circumstances, application would create an exceptional undue hardship. I think having your privacy invaded with vehicle lights all the time would be an exceptional undue hardship. And from the list of fences provided to us, and I don't know how many of these are front yard fences. I can tell from the photos, some appear to be. But it does appear that in this neighborhood there are other neighbors with fences that are in excess of the four feet. And in addition, we've got the testimony of her neighbors directly to her north and south indicating it's approved neighborhood and they support the fence. And it does appear that that standard's met. Standard three, I don't believe that you can say the hardship's self-imposed, given the topography. So I again concur with Ms. Denny. Standard four, I concur with staff is met. Standard five, I concur with staff is met. Standard six as well. Standard seven, I disagree with staff, agree with Ms. Denny, that she needs the taller fence to prevent, the biggest thing for me would be the obstruction or the headlights coming into her home. And so a four-foot fence doesn't, won't solve that problem. So I think this is the minimum variance. So I'm going to be supporting the motion, would recommend a yes vote. I think it's also important that we've heard from her neighbors. She sounds like a good neighbor. People have just mentioned how it's improved the side of the lot, improved the neighborhood, and they support it. And so that also weighed heavily with me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other comments from the board members? Mr. Vig?
I agree with Ms. Denny and Mr. Fink on finding that there is a feature of the lot itself in the topography with regard to standard number one. And I'd like to just add that I think that the configuration of the street tends to make it exacerbated, because if you imagine a vehicle traveling east to west, rounding that corner, the headlights would tend to sweep on the house as opposed to if it was just a house along a straight street. So I think topography combined with the configuration of the street makes, in my mind, standard number one to be met. And strict application of this code with standard number two, I think, believe would be an undue hardship on the homeowner. And with the other board members' findings, I concur with, and I intend to support the motion as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there any other comments from any of the board members? Mr. Brookhart?
I don't think standard seven is met. That if Shannon Circle is the secondary front yard setback, a six-foot-high fence could be built ten feet back from the property line. And I'm looking at the as-built on page seven. And at the west side of the house, there's a ten-foot dimension. And there's also a ten-foot dimension, which looks kind of like a bay that projects out on the south side of the structure. And so taking something roughly that distance sort of comes down halfway on the gravel driveway. And so a fence in that location retains the whole tile patio and, at least on the west property line, you know, a fairly generous piece of grass or lawn. So I don't think this is the minimum variance that grants a reasonable use of the land. I think either a four-foot fence on the property line is doable. If the petitioner desires to have a higher fence and the city rules that this is the secondary front yard setback, I don't think that ten-foot decreases the yard to any significant degree that it's unusable. So I won't be supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Brookhart. Are there any other comments from any of the board? That motion passes by a vote of five to one. Again, any party agreed by this decision has thirty days to appeal to Superior Court. The thirty-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. That brings us to, let's see, the case H. Three, which was two thousand ten, zero-eight-six. That case has been postponed. So anyone here, I apologize for not bringing that up sooner. It's been postponed to nine, nine, ten. Okay, I've been told that we need a motion to postpone because it's department policy. I would entertain a motion to postpone two thousand ten, zero-eight-six to the September ninth meeting. Mr. Vig, you've indicated you'd make that motion. Mr. Fink, you've indicated you'd second that. Is there any opposition to postponement? Seeing none, case two thousand ten, zero-eight-six is postponed to the September ninth, two thousand ten meeting. That brings us to case two thousand ten, zero-eight-eight. The petitioner is Charles Duncan. Is the petitioner here this evening? He's indicated he is. Could we have staff's presentation of the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was posted, advertised, and fifty-one public hearing notices were mailed. We did not receive any responses to this case.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is just a few lots away from the, one of the previous cases involving the stream. It's on the north side of the road and a few lots to the east. This is a front yard setback request. This property is radically different from the other property that was on the stream side of the road. This property is very steeply sloped, with overall slope approaching fifty percent. There is an as-built on page three that shows what the applicant is proposing. The lot is a legal and conforming R-six lot. It was platted before zoning was enacted, so it would be grandfathered in any case. But it's not legal R-six unless you add one half of the right-of-way, which of course is what we do for R-six. I point that out just to emphasize that the buildable area of any lot that is an R-six is going to be somewhat less than another R-six lot if half the right-of-way isn't needed for making it conforming size. There are some other issues on the property. There's a shed, driveway, shed driveway, a few other things. Those are all discussed in the conditions. So I'd like to go straight into the findings and the seven standards. Standard one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. The standard is partially met. There are extraordinary physical circumstances in the slope of the property, where the slope sometimes approaches fifty percent. However, the standard is only partially met because slope affects all properties along the north side of our own lane and lots throughout the upper hillside are often affected by slope. However, again, I would point out that the lot, its size and shape, were platted before the zoning regulations were in place. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, deny would create an exceptional or undue hardship. Standard is partially met. There is extreme slope affecting the area. And the applicant points out that there are large homes within four hundred feet of his property. However, we don't see this as an apples-to-apples comparison as most of those other properties exist on relatively level pieces of ground. The only exception being the lot immediately to Mr. Duncan's west. And there are some pictures of that lot to the west submitted as part of the application. Standard number three, that the hardship is not self-imposed. The standard is partially met. Based on standard one, there is severe physical impediment to the property. And although the applicant is not responsible for the plat or the slope, these are pre-existing conditions that are very obvious to anyone who would see the property and should suspect that there are going to be some development limitations readily apparent in a lot with this kind of slope. Therefore, buyers should have been aware of these types of limitations at the time of the purchase and the need for the variance should have been questioned at that time. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. I'm going to change that one to the standard is substantially met. Simply based on the amount of slope and how Mr. Duncan is trying to minimize drainage and sloughing issues by requesting this variance, we believe standard four is substantially met. Standard five, the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code and will not change the character of the neighborhood, that standard is substantially met. Setbacks in right-of-way are typical, what they are throughout the neighborhood. And with the extra-wide right-of-way in this area, our own lane actually has one hundred feet of right-of-way in this location. We can safely say that standard is substantially met. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage. Going to change that one to substantially met also, as in standard four, there are definite positive impacts if slope cutting can be minimized or decreased. And standard seven, the variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard is partially met. The house is a modest eighteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet in size. There are other homes in the area that are quite large, three thousand to six thousand square feet. However, the standard's only partially met because these other homes are located on much more level topography. Given the pre-existing conditions of the size and shape of the lot and the topography, and that it's always possible to build a slightly smaller home, we can only say that this standard is partially met. Because the standards are not all substantially met, the department must recommend denial. However, should the board find for approval, there are three conditions on page nine of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the board members? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Barrett, I wonder if you could help me understand the intent of the standards a little bit. With regard to number one, the conditions of the land have to distinguish it from other land in the general area. And the comment is that much of the other land in the area is substantially steeply sloped. And then later on, we're comparing this parcel with, or homes on other parcels in the area that are much larger, and they're on relatively flat pieces of property. So how big of an area does standard one apply to if we're talking about a substantially sloped area and then we're comparing size of home plan on this lot with large homes that are on level ground four hundred feet away?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, the idea behind standard number one is that these extraordinary physical circumstances have to be somewhat unique to your property, meaning the neighbors can build without a variance, but you must have the variance in order to get something comparable. And when we talk about it being in the same area or in the same district, we're looking both near and far. The same neighborhood, the same area means the same street, the same neighborhood. The same district means going out to the ends of the R-six district in that general area to see how other R- to see how other R6 homes are affected, or other R6 lots are affected. Since the slope is a common issue for R6, both in the neighborhood and throughout the upper hillside R6 district, is why we can only say the standard is partially met. Regarding the other lots with large houses and where the lots are large, very large, and relatively level, we're trying to make a comparison here that those folks were able to purchase large, level lots and are entitled to have the maximum house that they can without meeting, without needing variances, still meet the setback requirements. Whereas when you've purchased a lot that has obvious physical limits, you need to be aware that you're not going to get something comparable to those other folks.
Mr. Burkhart.
I'm looking at the proposed plot plan on page three and also the aerial photograph on page eleven. We had testimony in a prior case that the, that further on down at this road that dead ends, that the right-of-way is eighty feet, and I see from this information that actually it's, the right-of-way is even wider at this location. There's an offset, and it's a hundred feet in width, and coincidentally, that surveyor marked from the existing roadway, and we realized that, yeah, the existing roadway's gravel, and the city could choose to reconstruct that in any method that they want, but at least presently that there's almost forty feet from the edge of the roadway to the property line. Would that have an impact in terms of standard number one in your mind?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burkhart, no. But I would, I would add that initially, the traffic department objected to the setback until it was made clear to them that there is one hundred feet of right-of-way available here, and that when and if the time does come to expand the road, the setback, the reduced setback is probably not going to be an issue because traffic will have a lot of right-of-way to work with, and they're not going to take right-of-way from Mr. Duncan's side anyway. It's just too steeply sloped. He'd lose his driveway. The cutting would just be unreasonable. The road is much more level just across on the south side of our own lane. I think that's where the construction, and I'm mentioning that to emphasize that traffic had an objection. The right-of-way is adequate. Mr. Duncan is well back as far as he needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff at the board? Seeing no one, could the petitioner come forward, please? Can you state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Charles Duncan, D-U-N-C-A-N.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. You have ten minutes for your presentation.
Okay, I'd probably start off by just giving you a little history of my involvement with the property. I bought the property three and a half years ago. The first thing I did was to walk the property and try to decide if I was going to buy it or not, and two things that I decided before I bought the property. Number one was that I did not want to do what the neighbor had done and cut into that hill and have a, you know, a horrible slope destabilization problem. The second thing I decided was that the entire neighborhood was full of debris and construction materials that had been left there over many, many years, and I hauled away seven thirty-foot loads of debris, including debris after my property, and cleaned up the whole neighborhood. The first issue of building on the lot, initially, all of the stakes that were in the ground that I used to determine my purchase, all the stakes were wrong, and my surveyor then pointed out after I purchased it how far off those stakes were. But let's go to issue number one, under the extraordinary physical circumstances, and you brought up the fact that the rest of the neighborhood was sloped, but yet they had level lots. And I think what needs to be pointed out is that the other lots have natural benches on them higher than my lot. My lot has its natural bench down low so that I would be closer to the setback. My lot is no similar to the lot right next door with the environmental problem on it. They decided to cut into the hill and cause a long-term erosion problem. I just believe that the best way to develop that lot was to not cut into the hill and try to keep, you know, stability behind my house. So going to number two, so anyway, I just want to say that standard is met because there's only two lots in our own lane that have that extreme slope with no natural bench. So that's my article, my argument to number one. Anyway, for number two, I believe the standard is met because this is the only possible way to develop this lot. If you tried to develop it in a way that would comply with this hundred-foot right-of-way, then you would have that, you know, you would have that same destabilization problem. Then I have apparently four, five, and six. I don't have to address because they already agreed to those. Going to number seven, says a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. Well, if you notice on that drawing that the depth of my house is thirty foot, and the reason I need thirty foot for the depth of the house is because I have a fire exit in the back of my garage as a pocket stairway that also includes the possibility of putting a wheelchair lift in the back of my garage. So if I tried to make the house only twenty foot deep instead of the thirty that I'm proposing, then I would lose my wheelchair lift, and I have, I thought about because I have chronic arthritis, and I plan on keeping this house for a very long time, and I may end up putting that wheelchair lift in there. Anyway, so what I'm proposing is to comply with a sixty-foot right-of-way. The base of my house, as I've proposed it, will comply with how the rest of the road is. You guys said earlier that that is an eighty-foot right-of-way for the rest of the road. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that the rest of that road is a sixty-foot right-of-way. The hundred-foot right-of-way begins at the property right next to mine. So I will ask that question now if that is true or not, because if that is a sixty-foot right-of-way, which I was told by planning and zoning, I'm trying to comply with a sixty-foot right-of-way offset now with the base of the house, but I'm actually asking for five-foot additional because I have a deck that is five foot that extends out above the house. And that deck is necessary to have two additional fire exits for the house. So if I comply with the sixty foot without the deck, that means I lose my two fire exits on both sides of the house. So I, did I get all seven of them, or did I not? Let's see, number three, the hardship is not self-imposed, and special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. All I would have to say there is my only other option would be to raise the bench elevation substantially, but I can't do that because then my driveway would be out of compliance with the maximum slope of the driveway. Right now, my, the driveway that's in there complies, but if I raised the bench of that house, then my driveway would be too steep to comply. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Not that we're here to answer, answer your questions, but just as clarification, on pages forty and forty-one of the packet are the plats, and it would appear that there is a hundred feet of right-of-way in front of your property, and just to the west, the, there's fifty, well, it's a very small drawing, but there's fifty feet of right-of-way north of the center line, and it appears thirty feet south of the center line. So to the west of your property, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Duncan by the board? Does staff have any questions?
No, thank you.
With that, thank you, Mr. Duncan. If you'll have a seat, I think we'll have a very short public hearing on this. You can maybe even step aside. I don't want you to intimidate anyone that might want to come up. Is there anything from the public wishing to testify?
I would say the only additional comment I would make would be that I currently am retired. I was forced into retirement because I have chronic arthritis, and I mean, I have my life savings in this.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duncan, not that you've sat down, do you have any rebuttal? He's indicated he does not. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member in this case, please? Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, in the case number 2010-088, I move that we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four zero point zero eight zero, which requires a fifty-foot front yard setback to allow a proposed structure to approach the front yard setback up to twenty-five feet, which is a setback of fifty percent, and that's subject to the three conditions as staff has presented on page nine of the packet.
On page nine, I'm sorry, did you say page nine of the packet? I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhart, you've indicated you'll second that motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Standard number one, I struggled with, as I mentioned in my question to Mr. Barrett. It seemed like there are some extraordinary circumstances of this property with regard to the slope, and I think the applicant did a good job of describing in a way that I can understand how that, his parcel differs from others that have a bench that's sufficiently as large to build on that's higher up and further away from the, from the property line. So I believe that there is a unique situation with this particular lot that distinguishes it from other land in the general area, and so I believe that this standard is substantially met. Standard number two, strict application of this code, and because of these physical circumstances, I believe it would create an undue hardship upon the property owner, depriving him of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. There is extreme slope, as noted in the staff packet, and as the packet notes, five large homes are within four hundred feet of the property. Clearly, this property is unique from the standpoint of being slope limited and the position of a building pad, in this case, being much closer to the property line. I believe strict application would create an undue hardship. Standard number three, so I believe that that standard is substantially met. Standard number three, these conditions don't result from the actions of the applicant. They existed. I think he's done a good job to try to find the best solution possible given the circumstances, and so I believe that is also substantially met. Standard number four, I don't believe, as staff does, that granting this variance would adversely affect the use of adjacent property. In fact, it appears to be a development that would minimize potential for erosion and damage to downstream properties or lower properties. Standard number five, this variance, if granted, will not change the character of the zoning district. I agree with staff that that standard is substantially met. Standard number six, the variance would not, in my opinion, adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality of Anchorage, and as staff believes it's substantially met, I do too. And standard number seven, that this variance, granted, is the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land, and given the fact that this, the applicant is proposing a modest square footage size of eighteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet, I think it's a, it's a very reasonable use of the land and nothing extravagant, and I think that to make a reasonable use of the land, I think this is the minimum variance possible. So for those reasons, I tend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhart.
I agree with Mr. Vig. Just want to amplify in terms of condition number one, that the adjacent right-of-way does appear to be a hundred feet and that the, at least the existing edge of the constructed roadway is approximately forty feet from the front property line, so I think the apparent reduction in the setback is not going to be obvious. I plan to support the variance request, and I'd like to draw particular attention for the petitioner to the department recommendations that condition the approval of the variance if the board votes in favor. Number two is resolve the need for a shared access agreement between lots one and two with land use review section. If you look on page three, the gravel driveway appears to clip the, a little bit of lot one there, and so either you'd have to reach an agreement with them or reconfigure your driveway so you're, you're not clipping over their, their little corner of the property line. And item number three, the shedding house must either be connected and structurally dependent on a common roof or separated by ten feet that, we don't want to see you back here because you constructed that storage building less than ten feet from the principal structure, so be advised that in your planning that you take care of both of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there any other comments from board members? Seeing none, please vote. That motion passes by a load of six to zero. Again, any party agreed by this decision has thirty days to appeal to Superior Court. The thirty-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. With that, how about if we take a very short, five-minute break, and then we will be back to hear the next case? All right. We're back in session. The next case on our agenda is case two thousand ten zero nine three. The petitioner is James Ryan. We had a fifty-fifty chance that petitioner's, oh, are you Mr. Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Ryan's indicated he is here. Could we have a sufficiency of notice by the staff, please?
On July twenty, there were sixty-seven public hearing notices mailed. No responses were received from the public or the Sand Lake Community Council.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Could you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from minimum yard requirements to allow a deck to encroach eight inches into the required five-foot side yard setback in the R-two-M district. The duplex and decks were built in two thousand seven. The eight-inch encroachment of one of the decks was discovered when the owner applied for a certificate of occupancy to close out the building permit. The duplex was not built according to the approved site plan, and therefore, the deck encroaches into the side yard setback. The maximum encroachment allowed for an administrative variance is four point eight inches, and he has an eight-inch encroachment. Standard number one does not appear to be met. There are no creeks or wetlands on the lot. The rectangular shape of the lot is common in this district. There are no easements that constrain the development of the lot. The lot is affected by topography, but not more than other lots in the district. The lot has a well and an onsite septic system which constrains the developable area. The physical condition of the lot is not different from other lots in the general area. The physical condition does not necessitate the need for the variance. The need for the variance from where the deck was recently constructed is self-imposed. Furthermore, the house already has one deck that conforms to the minimum five-foot side yard setback requirement. Standard number two does not appear to be met. The topography of the lot and the location of the well and septic do not create the need for the variance. The deck can be built in a conforming location. There is another deck that is already built in a conforming location. Strict adherence to the code does not deprive the petitioner from having a second deck. Standard number three does not appear to be met. There is no peculiarity of the lot. The lot is a similar size, shape, and topography of other lots on this street. The need for the variance is self-imposed because the lot is at parity with other lots in the district. The need for the variance is a result of the petitioner's desire to keep an existing deck in its current location. The need for the variance is self-imposed. Standard number four is met. The granting of the variance would not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to the public welfare. Standard number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional, not a use variance. The front deck encroaches eight inches into the side yard setback, but the structure itself does not change the character of the zoning district or the neighborhood. Standard number six is met. The front deck will not cause a fire separation or access problems for buildings. The encroachment will not obstruct the clear-site triangle. There is no clear-site triangle for this lot. No objections have been received from reviewing agencies or the public. Standard number seven does not appear to be met. The petitioner is requesting approval for a thirteen percent encroachment into the side yard setback. The deck has been constructed on this lot and with the existing house that meets the minimum. A deck has already been constructed on this lot that meets the yard setback requirements. This one does not. The department recommends denial of the variance because standards one, two, three, and seven do not appear to be substantially met. If the board finds that the standards have been met and the eight-inch encroachment is granted, it should be subject to conditions one through five on page six of the staff report. Page seven of the staff report shows an as-built of the property. Page nine of the packet is an aerial photo. It's difficult to read, but it's there. And the petitioner has provided several photos of the subject of the variance. That's on pages twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and several other pages. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Are there any questions of staff or the board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? Can you state and spell your name for the record?
James Ryan, R-Y-A-N.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, and you have ten minutes for your presentation.
We did not find out about this issue until the last of the as-bills were done. The house was constructed in such a condition that it encompasses the whole property. And with the rail and the septic issues, we had to set the house at a thirteen-degree angle to the south, which we were also trying to get the best view of the mountains. I mean, we have to say we did. It's a very custom house, and there was, I think, when the contractor actually dug the foundation to the house, we were like one foot off. That's how big the house encompasses the whole property. It is from corner to corner. So, when we, if we talk about the deck, there is another deck. The other deck's in the back of the house. It's a little eight-by-five deck, and of course, it falls within the setback range. This deck is the main deck of the front of the house, and it's huge. And if you look at the pictures, and you look at the deck, when you found out that we were eight inches over, they thought, well, maybe we could just move the four-by-four back onto the deck. But what we found out was that by moving the four-by-four, we didn't appease the appearance of the setback, because we would have to move another three inches back. But if you actually look at this picture here, you'll see that this is, this picture here is the four-by-four. That's where we're encroaching in. Well, if we go four inches back, if you look at another picture, that is where the main structural beam connects to the retaining wall. So, you can't move the deck another three inches back without taking the whole deck down. This deck is thirty thousand dollars. So, to say it's a simple issue of just moving a beam or moving this is not the case. What we're here to do today is say that there was a mistake made. We're here to correct it and to follow the procedures, but it's just not an issue of just moving a beam or moving, you know, part of the deck. The other issue is that I also own the property next door, where this is in the setback too. I own that property. I've owned that property for fifteen years. It's one of our rental properties. We don't plan on getting rid of this property. I understand that we can say, oh, yeah, someday you sell it, and then I'll send it encroaching on to the other person's property. But that's really not the case. The case is that we're just trying to resolve the issue here today of eight inches. And, you know, with the topography, if you actually looked at where the right-hand side of where the deck is and how the house had to be turned, there's a fifteen-foot slope right there on the side of the property. So, it's actually a double-stacked retaining wall that goes up. So, the house actually kind of had to be turned this way for two reasons. Number one, we wanted the best view of the mountains. Number two, it was how the house had to be set with the rail and the septic on these properties. And there again, like I say, it was really a, you know, contractor issue that when we dug the foundation, we were basically eight inches off of the property line, or the setback. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Do you have the packet in front of you? Can you look on page seven on the as-built?
Yes, sir.
Page seven. We're acting on this variance for the encroachment of eight inches, but, and you've mentioned that it's a fairly substantial deck, but when I looked at it, yes, it's an eight-inch encroachment, but it's actually for a pretty small portion of the deck itself. The entire deck does not encroach eight inches. It's just a small corner of that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if you look at, if you look at this picture here.
When you say here, okay, yeah. Okay, and that, for the, that's okay. If you go back for the record, I believe that's page thirty-one of our packet.
Yeah. If we look at what's encroaching right there, you can see the four-by-four. That's really what's encroaching into the air. Now, this is in the air, so this is actually, I think we're forty-eight inches above the And, I mean, we're a four-by-four, if I can move the four-by-four back onto the deck, it doesn't cover me because I'm still four inches off. So, that means I would have to cut the deck off four inches back, but that is right where, if we look at the other picture, you'll see where the main structural beam comes down on the rail. That's right where the other structural beam comes down. So, I can't move the four-by-four and then cut the four inches off the deck because then I've, now I've taken off the main structural beam of that four-by-four deck. Now, to say that, say that, okay, I can move that structural beam down to the ground, well, that falls right in the middle of my main door. Because if you take that structural beam off the deck and you move it down, then that falls right into my main door, right in my main door. So, I can't, I can't move that beam.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Are there any other questions of the board? From the board of Mr. Ryan? Seeing no other questions, does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you.
Again, Mr. Ryan, if you'll step aside, we'll have a very brief public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No.
Mr. Ryan, do you have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
He's indicated he does not have any rebuttal. Mr. Burkhart, are you, do you have a question or you?
Yes. Short question for the petitioner. I guess.
Mr. Ryan, could you come forward, please?
I'm an architect. I'm not a structural engineer, but I guess I'm trying to understand the framing of this deck. Looking at the first colored picture here, there's a major, it looks like to be a fairly major beam, and the joists beyond that are cantilevered, and that's quite a bit back from the edge of the deck. I see the four-by-four that you're pointing out, but I guess what escapes me is it seems like, in terms of the multiple beams under this deck, there should be some way to easily reframe this, even if it takes moving that post that's on the top of the retaining wall to recapture eight inches. Or the other item that would make this whole thing go away, if you own the adjacent property, you could replat and move that property line over eight inches, and you wouldn't need a variance from us. And so, one of the things we have to find, standard seven, this is the minimum variance that grants a reasonable use of the land.
Yes, sir.
And to me, it seems like there's a couple other avenues for you that you might, this may be the most expedient way, but we're supposed to be, standard seven tells us we're supposed to be really jealous, and in terms of granting variances, maybe that's not the correct term, but that's the, one of the variance.
As we look at it, being a structural engineer, as we look at the main blue lamb that runs across the fence, and if you, you know, maybe I didn't give enough good pictures, I tried to, but you'll see beams coming down here, you'll see beams coming down here. These are holding up the main structures. Over here, after the left, where I'm eight inches over into the air, there's a main beam right there that holds up that section of the deck there. So, we can't move that beam unless we drop it down to the ground right there. And there again, if we drop that down, that is right where you lock in the front door. So, it can't be moved over. The beam can't be moved over.
But it does look like that, that column is, you know, that.
It's sitting on a retaining wall. That retaining wall is part of the retaining walls that are holding up the banks of a fifteen-foot rail off to the right of the house.
Right. And that column looks like it's something on the order of eight feet away from the door, so I.
No, it's actually, if you were to be standing in front, here's the column right here of the beam. Here's the door. It's within this path. It's probably, there's two doors there. It's a duplex. So, one of the doors is off to the right, about eight or ten feet, and the other door is right within, within probably maybe a foot and a half from that beam.
It's like eight feet. You've got a four-foot overhang that you see on the plot plan, you know, on this photograph right here, that you can clearly see that this column is many feet away from that block wall behind.
No, that's not the door. The door is right here.
Would you, Mr. Ryan, would you speak in the, Mr. Ryan, could you speak in the microphone just so, just so we can capture?
Yeah. You're not getting a clear view of the downstairs. What you're seeing is that deck is upstairs. Okay, so it's a three-story house. What you're seeing is the deck is upstairs. The downstairs door is within maybe two foot of that beam.
Well, two foot horizontally, but it's, the beam is about eight feet out from the face of the building. Perpendicular distance from the door.
Yes, sir. Here's the retaining wall right here. As you walk up to the main house, here's the retaining wall. Here's the beam holding up the deck. Here's the front door right here. So, it's probably this far. So, to move this beam, the only place we can go is right here, and that would be right in the center of the wall over there.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin.
A point of information, just for the benefit of all present hearing this discussion, page twenty-nine, there's a really excellent photo showing both beams on that side of the deck. There's the short one that's on the retaining wall and then the longer one that's towards the front, the deck. So, it's at least one view where you can see the two beams, and then focus on the shorter one, which is at issue.
Mr. Vig.
Mr. Ryan, I'm, this is within inches of being able to solve this thing, so I'm trying to do like Mr. Burkhart here, so bear with me. But according to the as-built, it's four point four feet from the property line to the corner of this deck. And you may not be able to answer this, but I'll ask it. Can you tell me what point on that deck the four point four feet was measured to? Is it measured to the, to the face of the joist on the exterior, or is it measured to the outside?
It's measured from.
Most likely, point on the vertical.
It's measured from the outside of that four-by-four.
So, would it be possible to? So would it be possible to take that four-by-four and instead of attach it to the exterior of that joist, to attach it to the interior and gain yourself, if we're talking about point-six feet, that's seven-point-two inches, they need, they'll give you four-point-eight, so there's two-point-four inches.
Well, we're two-point-four inches away, and here's the problem. I mean, we'd already looked at it and had contractors come over there and say, hey, if we just move the four-by-four inside the side of the deck, I'm still two clinic something inches away from being legal.
Really?
Yes. So, I mean, I mean, this is, this is round here today. I mean, yeah.
I thought you'd had at least three inches there to work with.
I mean, the variance was, I could be four-point-something, but we're seven inches away. No, we're two inches off.
Two-point-four.
Two-point-four. Yeah, the two-point-four inches. I can't, no, I can't get the two-point-four inches.
Okay.
I mean, I wish I could, but I can't.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? All right. Again, is there, I'm sorry, we were in, okay, with that, we're, I had to figure out where we were. That public hearing really threw me off, but thank you, Mr. Ryan. With that, the matter rests with the board. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we had, yeah, we, Mr. Burkhart asked a question right before we went to the right. Mr. Burkhart is the sole reason that I'm confused right now, but, but yeah, the public hearing was, okay, open, closed, rebuttal by both staff and the petitioner, and now the matter rests with the board. With that, could I have a positive motion from the board, please? Let me make this, let me put this in perspective. If we want to get out of here, someone's got to make a motion, so. No pressure, though. Do we need to take a break so people can collect their thoughts, or? Ms. Williams. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burkhart, Mr. Burkhart, I apologize.
Want to switch things around? That's okay. In case number two thousand nine dash zero-nine-three, I move, we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four oh point oh four five G, minimum yard requirements to allow a deck to encroach eight inches into the required five-foot side yard setback, subject to conditions one through five on page six of the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Ms. Williams, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Burkhart.
I don't plan on supporting the variance request unless board members can change my initial thoughts here. I agree with staff that I don't think standard number one is met, that I think what we have here was a minor construction error that was due to repositioning of the house. So even though the lot is slope-affected, I don't think that gives rise to standard number one being met. Standard two, I guess, may be partially met in the sense that the strict application of this code to an issue that's nearly de minimis and in qualified for an administrative variance, I think, has some weight, so I think maybe that might be partially met. I think standard three is not met. I think that this hardship is self-imposed due to a construction error and repositioning of the house. I think standard four is met. I agree with staff that there is no adverse effects on adjacent property. Standard five is met, that it's not a use variance. Standard six is met, that it won't adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the municipality of Anchorage. But I don't think standard seven is met. Although we've had testimony that this is, would be very difficult and expensive to modify this deck, I guess I'm not personally convinced of that, that it would seem to me that there might be some way of reframing this, even though this is nearly in line with the door beyond, and it appears to be at least, you know, six or seven feet at least from the face of the building on that lower level. And the other possible remedy to this homeowner, if he owns the adjacent property, is replating the two lots and putting a little angle or offset in the property line to make it in compliance, and it would remove the need for the variance. But I'm interested in hearing opinion of other board members.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Ms. Williams.
I agree with Mr. Burkhart and his explanation and analysis of the findings, and I would only emphasize on standard number one, that I just, I don't see where there exists any exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of this property, which differentiates it from other property in the area to, to allow this variance and the standard to be substantially met. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any other comments from any board members? Any other comments? I, I, well, for my opinion, I actually intend to support the motion, and I, I do find, I guess the, I find that this actually is, in my mind, a de minimis variance. Again, if I'm doing the math correctly, and my geometry is somewhat correct, we're looking at a variance for something the size of a eleven-by-seventeen sheet of paper as a whole. If you took the area of that deck, you know, with the orientation, while staff has said that we are talking about a, I believe they said a thirteen percent variance, thirteen percent encroachment, if you look at the total area of the impact of this deck, it's, it's extremely small. Again, part of the orientation of the house, the reason we're here, I think, or the petitioner's here, I'm sorry, is, is due to the orientation of the house, but that orientation of the house also reduces the gross area of encroachment as well. And I'll speak to the standards as well. The, you know, the petitioner, by his own admission, has stated that they tried to take advantage of the view, the views, so, and I would definitely be interested in any of the comments by any of the other board members on this, but the house orientation, they were trying to take advantage of the exposure of the, of the sun, as well as the locations for the well and septic system. So I find that those, while they may not be strong reasons for finding that standard to be met, I find that it's at least partially met. I find the undue hardship is for such a small amount of encroachment to, you know, the petitioner has obviously looked at this to see whether or not it would be easier to, to just remove the encroaching portion of the deck, and instead has opted to come before the board tonight, pay the, pay the application fee. So I, I'm fairly comfortable that if there was a, a workable solution, that that would have been taken into account. So I find that standard is met. I am struggling a little bit with three, with standard three, but again, going back to the, my finding that standard one is met with the orientation of the house, and again, falling back to the de minimis amount of the variance, I'd find that it's met. Four through six are also met, and again, going back to the total size of the, what I compute for the variance, I find that this is the minimal that's necessary, and a deck is a reasonable use of the land, a reasonable use. So with that, I intend to support the motion. Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too believe this is a de minimis variance, and for the reasons you stated, will also be supporting the motion.
Are there any other comments by any of the board? That motion passes by a vote of five to one. The, again, for the record, any party agreed by this decision has thirty days to appeal to Superior Court. The thirty-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. That brings us to case two thousand ten zero-nine-three. The, I'm sorry, I was looking at the last, this case is two thousand ten zero-nine-five. The petitioner is Blaine C. Smith. Is the petitioner here this evening? He's indicated he is. Mr. Barrett, would you provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property, the variance request was advertised, posted, and forty-five public hearing notices were mailed for this. We did not receive any responses.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one's a little bit different, and we don't see too many of these, so I'm going to be making frequent reference to the ASBelt on page three as I flip back and forth through this. This is a request in the R-sixth District for lot width variances for the two side-by-side lots. The variance, if granted, will move one of the lots towards conformity with current code in terms of lot width, and it will decrease the lot width of the other lot. So in a sense, that's what the variance is really all about. But the issue that brought this up is that one of the houses on the north lot actually straddles the property line, so the applicant is going to have to rearrange the interior lot line. That's going to require a change to the lot width, which is the variance, and we'll get into all of that as part of the standards. If the variance is successful, as I say, one lot will move towards conformity, one lot will be a little less conforming, but the house will no longer straddle the lot line and will have legal setbacks. In the R-sixth, the minimum lot width is one hundred and fifty feet. The northern lot has a width of eighty-three feet, and it has a house that straddles the lot line. The south lot is one hundred and sixty-four feet wide, which is legal, but after the replat, it will only be one hundred and twenty-four feet wide, as well its partner to the north, and both illegal in terms of width. Taking a little bit closer look at the ASBelt, you can see the existing situation, shared driveway coming in from the south, the house straddling the lot line, and if you look closely, you will see the proposed property line that will be a replat if the variance is approved. Because of how lot width is measured, even though the lot line isn't moved over for its entire length, it ziggs about a quarter of the way up, the lot line is measured from a midpoint, and that's how we arrive at those two lot widths, so we don't need to get into that. That's more of a plating issue. But you can see that with the proposed property line, if the variance is approved, the lots will have similar lot widths, and the house will be made legal because it will be avoiding the yard setback. So we're looking, what we're looking at here is a lot width variance for those two lots. The land is unsubdivided. The lots in question are part of a land grant from nineteen sixty-six and were sold by deed but never platted beginning in nineteen seventy-one. Sales down through the years have all been by deed down to the current owner. A replat will make all these illegal transfers legal. There is an expired nineteen ninety-eight permit for the house on the north lot, and that will be a condition to be resolved if the variance is granted. These lots are steeply sloped up near the end of Eagle River Road. Neither slope, excuse me, neither lot meets the three-to-one width-to-depth ratio, and that will require a separate plating variance that will be done as part of the replat. As I mentioned, the actual need for the variance is because there is a house straddling the lot line, but what we're actually dealing with are lot width variances for the two Regarding the standards, standard one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. The standard is partially met. There is good steep slope affecting the property, and the east ends of both lots are within a moderate avalanche zone hazard area. However, the standard is only partially met because slope and avalanche are not peculiar to these lots, nor are those issues directly related to the location of the interior lot line and the need for the variance. And that's what the case is all about, the house in relation to the lot line, which has brought this subject up. The lot widths are a man-made problem as a result of the illegal subdivision by deed and have been that way since nineteen seventy-one. Standard two, because of the physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional undue hardship. The standard is substantially met. The house on the north lot would probably be unable to be sold separately if there's any type of outside financing because the house is literally across the lot line. If the property cannot be replatted, then the house cannot be made legal without physically moving the structure. Standard three, the hardship is not self-imposed. This standard is not substantially met, and this is probably the most difficult of the seven standards. For the first part of that standard, there is some, some physical peculiarity of the land, but it is not directly related to the variance, so that portion is only partially met. For the second part of this standard, back in ninety-eight, the applicant submitted a plan for this property, which indicated the house in a legal location, and that plan is on page eighteen in the package. The applicant was advised to submit a final ASBelt to indicate final house location and close out his nineteen ninety-eight permit. This was never done, and the permit expired. Therefore, the need for a variance does result from the actions of the owner because the location of the house was shown in a legal location in the plan on page eighteen, and that location is very different from the actual location in which the house was actually built. Regarding standard number four, the variance will not adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. That standard is met. There are no structure separation issues, fire, project management and engineering, drainage. Fire, project management, and engineering, drainage have not identified any issues with the property. There have been no letters in opposition. The relocation of the interior lot line, if the variance is granted, will not change the outward appearance of the two properties when you view them from the road, but it will provide the house on the north lot with legal yard setbacks. Standard five, the variance is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard is substantially met. This is a dimensional request. These are large legal size lots other than their width, and it's not an obvious encroachment. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare. The standard is substantially met. Those are essentially the same reasons as in standard four. No offside impacts have been identified. The 150-foot width is to provide setbacks, open space, et cetera, and these standards, these other standards do appear to be met. And standard seven, the variance is a minimum variance. That standard is not substantially met. Although the width discrepancy is a relatively small 25 feet, there is a conforming alternative, and that is to erase the interior lot line, create one lot, and remove one of the dwelling units. This is a reasonable use of the property, and this is the common use within this neighborhood, one house on a large lot. A replat from the other properties outside of the applicant's properties to acquire a 25-foot strip from them by a replat is very unlikely, as lots to the north and south of the subject property would be made illegal if they had to give up 25 feet. Because standards three and seven are not substantially met, the department recommends denial. There are four conditions on pages nine and 10 of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Vig?
Mr. Barrett, the minimum lot width is 150 feet?
Yes.
And without getting too fancy with that lot line, could it not angle up to the north, approximately up to where it currently exists, and leave the width on the eastern end of the southerly lot at its 164 feet and not subject this southerly lot to this variance?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, we'd really have to draw it out because of the way lot width is measured. It might work, it might not.
So the measurement of lot width is not a simple matter? It takes into account shape and area and all these things?
Correct. I believe the applicant's proposing the most practical alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, could the petitioner come forward, please? Can you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Blaine Smith. B-L-A-N-E-S-M-I-T-H.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. You have 10 minutes, and again, we must find that all seven standards are met, so if you could have your presentation address the standards?
Well, I think, just to start out, the whole journey and education of this has come as an effort to move to compliance. I think that if I can proceed along this path, that the intent and the spirit of the zoning regulations can be met. So as far as -- I think number one was met, number two was met, number three, are there -- let me see. The hardship is not self-imposed. I have to say that I'm not -- I don't have real firm ground on that one. I was -- I'm guilty of being -- having the naivete to think that I could sell myself a piece of property to alleviate this problem. And this problem was initially perpetrated by a not clear understanding of what slope would do to the property that I was trying to build. And so when I placed the property, or when I, you know, put the house on the property, it became clear in the process that in order for the entry to the garage to be in front, I would have to push the house back into the hillside an additional 30 feet or so, which would end up, you know, pushing the back of the house quite a ways into the dirt, which would make for several hundred more yard of excavation. And so basically, just right then, I decided, well, that's not going to work. Let's put the garage in the side of the house and push the house over. After all, I own the property next door, and so that's what I did because of the lot steepness. And so it's kind of a little bit of the both, I guess. So it was a product of not -- of lot being steep, but I did make that decision to move it over. So I'll just let that stand as it does. I think four I met, five I met, six I met, and seven, if I understood, Mr. Barrett, I suppose there are other fixes to this thing. I could tear down my one house. Last, it was valued. It was $200 and some thousand dollars, and I'd really not -- I'd rather not tear down that house. Our intent is to have, if at all possible, two houses on two pieces of property, side by side, one that could perhaps serve as a rental or one that could get sold and finance a retirement, perhaps. So that's the intent. And so to vacate the property line and tear one house down, I don't think is a reasonable So I do think that this variance is a reasonable alternative, and it's a variance initially just to allow the property -- initially to allow the property to exist. It was passed down, sold by a liquid parcel, by the deed, by people before property prices went up so much, by people who had the cash to just buy it. And so that's what I did. And so I ended up with a piece of property that, unknown to me, did not conform to municipal codes as far as proportion and width of the property. And so bam, I've got this property. So I think by just allowing the property to exist, first of all, will allow me to take the next step in this process, and that's to subdivide the property and then move the property line. And I don't think that there's anything in this proposal that goes against R6 zoning. I think it even goes further towards giving both these houses the space they need from my two houses and also from potential neighbors' houses. So I think it's a good request for a variance. So, yeah. Will there be a time I can just make a -- just a general comment at the end of this whole thing? I don't want to say it ahead of time because I don't want to make it sound anyway, it wouldn't be appropriate.
Yes, Mr. Smith, you can reserve rebuttal time.
Okay, great.
Sure. Are there questions of the applicant? Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, what is -- do you know what the lot width is on three -- on the two properties to the north of yours?
Well, the one just adjacent is the same width as my northern one. It doesn't have a house on it yet, but it's a...
Okay, and maybe that's a question for staff. Maybe you covered that, Mr. Barrett. I'm assuming those two lots are non-conforming as well, then?
No, the one just to the north isn't.
Mr. Barrett, did you hear the question, or I don't know if you're researching?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. Mr. Fink, I was looking through. These properties have never been platted, so it's not like I can just flip to a plat and tell you, but just based on the aerials and the parcel boundaries, the lot to the south of Mr. Smith appears larger. It's just relative measurement. And the lot to the north of Mr. Smith appears to be about the same size as his larger lot, but that's all I can say. I'll get into the case and start trying to find something in the file as you continue to discuss it, though.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant by the board? Seeing none, I think we'll have a pretty quick -- oh, Mr. Barrett, you're researching? You're holding up the public hearing, Mr. Barrett. That doesn't mean we have to get there, though. Yes, Mr. Burkhart?
I guess I would note on the ASBelt that at least the verbiage on the lot to the north is it's the north half of the north half of the south half, and so that description is -- looks like it's equivalent in terms of the description of the south lot of the
Mr. Chairman, the lot that Mr. Burkhart was just referring to, the north half of the north half of the south half, is almost identical to the smaller of Mr. Smith's lots. They're both approximately 83 feet wide at the street frontage. The large lot to the south, and again, this is not a plat, this is rough, the large lot to the south of Mr. Smith labeled the north half of the north half of the southwest quarter is about 163 feet wide, very similar to his, Mr. Smith's, larger lot. Did that answer your question, Mr. Fink? Thank you.
I do also have another question for you, Mr. Barrett. On pages four and five, and bear with me if this was covered, but where it talks about the property history, states the lot themselves appear to have been sold by deed, not platted in 1971. Further goes on to say this is an illegal subdivision of land, but a replat would make the lots legal. And then that occurred in 1971. However, there was no zoning until 1984. So could you explain to me why it was -- why it's an illegal subdivision of land by the sale by deed?
Mr. Chairman, the state of Alaska, if I remember the dates correctly, adopted plating in 1955. So by selling a piece by a liquid parts without an actual subdivision is what makes it illegal. Yes, it did also precede zoning, but there was already state law regarding plating at that time.
Okay, however, if it had been platted, it was prior to zoning?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I also added, as part of this process, I'm given to platted, so that's kind of how I have to go, I guess.
Okay. I believe, Mr. Barrett, did you have any questions or comments of the applicant?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'm going to ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to testify. Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have any rebuttal or anything else you'd like to say?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to sound like out of place, but I'll say it anyway because I wanted to say it, but planning and zoning, if you go down to the head shed down there on Tudor, has improved tons. And since you guys are probably kind of the public face of, you know, zoning and plating, I had a -- really, everybody was super nice down there. I had a great experience, and they've improved that ton. So anyway, I just wanted you guys to know that Al and the rest of them are doing a great job. So, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. With that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Yes, Mr. Vig?
Mr. Chairman, in case number 2010-095, I move that we grant a variance in the R6 district from AMC 21.40.080F for lot width, which, granted, will allow replat of two lots, moving one lot toward conformity with current code and the other able to avoid a variance for yard setback. And that's subject to department recommendations, as one through three is shown on page nine of the staff packet.
And four on page 10?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Vig, would you speak to your motion, please?
Standard one, this seems to be quite an extraordinary situation, whether it's a physical circumstance or not. I'd be curious to hear what other board members have to say about that, but certainly, listening to the petitioner describe how to attempt to locate a home and garage on this lot, and faced with challenges of dealing with slopes and large amounts of excavation, I understand where there might have been some extraordinary physical circumstances that came into play, and so I believe that that's at least partially met. Standard number two, I agree with staff that strict application of that standard would be -- would create an undue hardship. The north -- a house on the north lot could probably not be sold. Generally, those transactions require financing, and without granting this variance, that would not be able to happen. Standard number three, it does appear to be a self-imposed hardship. I do believe that the applicant is taking these steps to remedy a situation that, at least on the lot width on the north side, existed prior to him purchasing the property. So I see it as an improvement. Standard number four, I agree with staff's findings that this variance would not affect the use of adjacent property as permitted under the code. Standard five, that it won't change the character of the zoning district, and I agree with staff on that. I don't believe that it would adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. the people of the municipality. And standard six, and so I believe that that's substantially met. With regard to standard seven, I don't think that tearing down the house is really the solution here, and I think that it's probably the minimum variance that we can come up with to solve this issue, and so I believe that that's substantially met, and I'm going to support this variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Ms. Denny.
On finding number one, I believe that that actually is more substantially met than partially met because of the topography and the slope of that lot. There was minimal sufficient building area for a house without some severe excavation going on. And on number seven, I don't believe tearing down one of the structures is a reasonable request, in that since the petitioner owns both properties, I believe that just dividing them down the middle to incorporate both structures is the minimal solution to this situation, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Are there anyone else in the public, I'm sorry, any other board member wishing to comment? Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would say I concur with Mr. Vig and Ms. Denny. I don't have as much heartburn with number three. I think the topography, I mean, the logic from one, extraordinary circumstances was substantially met, and then because of those, there would be undue hardship. I don't have a problem finding number three is substantially met either. I intend on supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other comments from any board, any of the board members? That motion passes by a vote of six to zero. Again, any party agreed by this decision has 30 days to appeal to Superior Court. The 30-day appeal period commences to run upon mailing of the written decision. With that, my one comment, I guess, Mr. Smith, I wish we could take credit for being the face of zoning and plating, but we can't, although we're willing to take all the credit and put all the blame on one of the other boards. But with that, that closes our public hearings and reports. I have nothing to report. Mr. Barrett, do you have something to report?
Yes, sir. You mentioned earlier in an email you'll be out September 9th. Do we have a hand count for two weeks from now? Does anyone know they will not be here? Four cases that night. The department's setting up some procedural and parliamentarian training. Would you rather have it an hour early, in an evening meeting, over lunch, or sometime after work? Any thoughts on that?
I'd say probably not right before a meeting, but I have no strong opinion other than that. Lunch or, do we get a lunch, a sandwich out of the deal, or what?
Yes, somebody over there has melted Gloria's heart because she said we'll feed them. So, think on it, and I'll ask Ms. Stewart to poll you tomorrow or next week.
Okay.
And the final item is those with terms expiring in October, please keep thinking, as Mr. Burkhart has, about replacements, and also consider serving beyond October if someone's been appointed, or, excuse me, someone's been nominated but not yet appointed to the position. We can fill in the gap through November, December, maybe.
Maybe we can shame them into holding a position for life?
For life.
Do we have, do we have a ninth member yet?
No.
Got it. Okay, I've got a question. Mr. Burkhart.
In relation to our last case here, now that we're done with that, is that something that's, is the plating board going to have any problem with approving a replat on that? Is that like a slam dunk since we've granted this variance, or is there another hurdle
The variance does not make it a slam dunk, no, but at the same time, they cannot, the plating board cannot object to the variance. It's not their bailiwick.
But there is also a variance at the plating board, Ms. Grant, for it as well, correct?
That's the width to depth ratio. That's why this isn't really a, or isn't necessarily a slam dunk. I think they'll see it as all of you have, that this is logically the most sensible solution. It's no harm, no foul for a portion of it. It's not overtly visual, no safety issues and so forth.
So four cases at the September 9th meeting?
Is our chair going to change his mind, or were you running away from a full docket and you'll change your mind now that it's only four cases?
I'll be thinking about you all in fishing. How's that sound? Are there any other comments by any board members? Mr. Barrett, no other comments? With that, we're adjourned.